The public on this, or is it?
You can read that.
Okay.
Just let them know that.
Item four, call the public, members of the public who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentation is for information purposes only, no action will be taken, there is a four-minute time limit.
Chairman, due to the current restrictions, the meeting was closed to the public for walk-in. Public comments were requested to be made known to the city clerk, and I did not receive any requests for public comment.
Okay. Item five, public hearing, consider rezoning at 91st and Cedarwood, K-10 apartments. Phase two, Brad.
Thank you, Chairman, this is Brad Weisenberger, Planning and Capital Projects Director. Go through the staff report like we typically do. While we're having an unusual format, the process that we follow as far as city staff presentation will remain the same. So I will go through Agenda Item 5A. There's an application that's been submitted to rezonate tract land at 34,000 West 91st Terrace. It's directly south and adjacent to the K-10 Phase 1 apartments. The request is being made by Travis Hicks, owner of Hike 10 Properties LLC. The application materials are included in your packet. The rezoning request is from Commercial, Commercial 2 to Multi-Family Residential R3. You have the proof of ownership affidavit indicating Travis Hicks is the owner of subject property. The current DeSoto zoning map is shown on page two. I would like to make a point out to you that actually the, what we're actually going to be rezoning is the larger tract. That's the 3.1 acre tract. There's actually another piece there that is included in the detention pond. When I, when we originally talked about this, three or four weeks ago with the applicant, at one time they were talking about including the detention pond in the rezoning, but that has since been changed, and the detention pond is no longer included in this zoning application, which is how the property is described in the application and the legal description. So I just wanted to point that out to your commissioners. Existing land uses are also included in the staff report, which includes M1, industrial, R3 multifamily to the north. There is a small section of residential, large lot properties that this is adjacent to, and then of course to the west is C2, what's this, the Harps site, and then two vacant tracts to the south that were recently rezoned with this subject tract to C2 within the past year. Uses allowed within the R3 zoning indicate that they can have single-family, two-family, multifamily units, and also have assisted living units allowed by right, education, mental health facilities, and religious uses are allowed by special use permit. The stated intent of R3 zoning is to allow for high-density residential development, and they are typically apartment units, which is what is being requested here tonight. One thing I wanted to also point out is on the future land use map, we have this area as mixed use. If the staff feels like this is an appropriate change that could be made for this area, when we went through the comp plan just recently, this area was somewhat up in the air, so that's why we gave it the mixed-use designation, which means it could be a variety of uses within our zoning categories. We didn't want to, as you know, we have mixed use in several places around in our future land use map, so that they could be a potential of several different types of uses. Going through the review of the zoning compatibility factors, character of the neighborhood is outlined above. The area includes single-family residential with multifamily used directly to the north. The area is in a location of growing retail uses. It's spelled that the R changed, the R3 will benefit the retail businesses in the area, and is certainly consistent with the R3 area to the north. And we believe that the buffering that has been provided in K-10 Place Phase 1 along the residential district is adequate for the R1 district that this potential tract backs up to as well. I kind of talked a little bit about the areas being shown as mixed use, as the future land use, and the variety of zoning districts in the area. However, we feel like because of the apartments to the north have already been approved, this, it's a very consistent follow-through of what's already in the area. Suitability of the uses which the property has been restricted under its existing zoning. As you know, commissioners, within the past year, was rezoned from M1 to C2, and the site development, or preliminary plat and final plat were designed with C2 in mind. However, this tract could not be put to use under the existing C2 category, and must be rezoned to have multifamily apartments. Length of time has remained as zoned, has not been zoned C2 very long, it was vacant for a long time as M1. As I mentioned, the road system was developed with C2 in mind. Either remaining C2 or rezoning R3 would appear to be economically viable. However, the applicant has chose to make a change and proceed forward with an R3 application. As you know, we do have a site plan for an apartment complex also on the agenda tonight that will follow this rezoning. Extent which there is a need in the community for the use is allowed in the proposed zoning, certainly to spur additional retail, additional rooftops, and population are necessary. So those have an increased need to increase population, allow more retail and commercial activities within the city itself, so our citizens don't have to travel outside the community to purchase goods and services. Allowing the multifamily residential lots will increase population. One thing also to point out, the K-10 apartments Phase 1 to the north has been well-received as currently at capacity. Availability of inadequacy of required utilities to serve the area. There is obviously brand-new infrastructure that will serve this site. It will not overtax or create any impact to our existing water or public sewers in this area. Access for electricity is already in sight. Public service accommodations, including police, sheriff, fire, parks, and schools will see little change from previous conditions. Extent which the uses in the proposed zoning would adversely affect the capacity or safety of that portion of the street network influenced by uses. The parking, all parking will be required to be on-site. City code does require two-family and multifamily spaces, have one and a half spaces per one-bedroom unit, and two spaces per dwelling unit for two or more bedrooms. As you see when we talk about the site plan, parking requested in the site plan does meet this requirement. So we don't see any issues with the parking or the street network being overly used in creating any kind of congestion. Environmental impacts as far as that the zoning might create would be excessive stormwater runoff, water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution, excessive nighttime lighting or environmental harm. Don't see any significant increase or decrease in the potential for environmental harm. I do want to think that we did request that the applicant submit a photometric plan prior to this moving on to the city council for their approval. And the applicant said that they were going to take care of that and get that to staff so we can review that item. Economic impact on the community from the uses allowed in the proposed zoning, as you know, this area has been part of the TIF district. It is also a property that has not generated much tax revenue, as I mentioned, as it stood for many years. As an M1 zoning tract, it was carrying very little activity and very little tax revenue. Certainly, the construction of apartments will increase those property taxes, and provides economic benefit to the community in terms of property tax value, but also sales tax from potential new residents. Extent which the zoning amendment may detrimentally affect nearby property. Considering the variety of uses nearby and adjacent R3, decided to change to R3 to not increase or decrease any of the property values. As I had mentioned, the residential R1 district, which might be the most potentially affected, will have a significant amount of screening behind the apartment unit complex, and a privacy fence that will be constructed at the applicant's expense. Relative gain depending to the public health, safety, and welfare from denial of the rezoning application. Staff believes there'd be little to gain to any adjacent neighborhoods or the public in denying and changing this application. As I pointed out through the staff report, there are a lot of positives to increasing population for DeSoto and rooftops, which also increase property tax values from the development of this tract, and also sales taxes from the individuals in town that spend money here in DeSoto. As I've also mentioned before, it's consistent with a comprehensive plan, follows our utilities and facilities plans. And at this time, the applicant is making all the street and road, water line, sewer line improvements to the area. And so we believe it's a positive result for this development. Overall, the recommendation of professional staff is to approve this rezoning. However, it is certainly up to the planning commissioners to make this decision and move forward with any kind of items that may impact their thinking. One criteria could certainly outweigh all of the others on any particular issue. But overall, we believe that any kind of potential negative impacts to the immediate neighbors and surrounding area certainly can be mitigated, and it is a, the staff believes a potential benefit to the area. So with that, that concludes my staff report. I'll certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for staff?
I'm curious, this is McPherson, about the retention pond. It obviously is the pond for the entire corner area.
Yes. Actually, I think it's, and Mike wrote, I think it's for the entire northern tract.
Everything, all the new stuff on the north side of Commerce.
Flows into that pond?
Yeah, yeah. Not Harps, but yeah, everything east of Harps goes.
So where the apartment's going to go and those other two lots on the south side would flow into that, okay, who maintains it?
That's a private, that'd be, the developer would continue to own that and maintain it. It's not a public detention pond.
Okay, so it's, even though it's not being taken into the rezoning for the new apartments, it is still owned by?
K-10.
K-10?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
It'll just remain C2, but yeah, so we did a drainage study when we first approved the preliminary plat for the subdivision. Drain study was done at that time, and one has been updated for the site plan application, actually, which is the next agenda item.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Makes sense. Any other questions for staff? Anybody online?
Lane has none.
Hey, Bob, this is Roger.
Yes. Come here, Roger.
I'm just curious, I mean, I didn't see anything in the staff report about the potential loss of C2 or commercial property zoning within the city being part of the analysis. I'm assuming you guys have considered that and don't feel that this loss of that commercial zoning would negatively impact the overall design of the, of the plan? Or, you know, I didn't really see a finding consistent on that. The reason I mention it, I suppose, is it strikes me after rezoning that property at 95th and Kill Creek to residential, and, and turning this party, property into residential, that we're, hopefully, somebody's keeping an eye on whether or not we're, we're reserving enough commercial development property that we might be able to do something with in the future. So as long as you're comfortable with it, I'm fine too, but I didn't really see that discussed.
Yeah, Roger, this is, this is Mike. I think I maybe partly addressed that. You know, we've never done any sort of quantitative analysis on that, and I don't know if, if we did, it'd be quite the crystal ball on something like that. What, what it does remind me of is when we, when Oletha Medical Center came in in the early 2000s, and we rezoned that whole 40-plus acre site from commercial to office industrial, that was a good chunk of the commercial, you know, the land in the, within the city that's developable and readily, easily developed into commercial. That, I think, is a good example, was a good example of a situation where, you know, that, that concept should have been weighed maybe more heavily than we weighted at the time. This, this one, just the scale of it doesn't exactly concern me, just from, you know, from, from a non-data perspective. I don't think the scale of this particular measure reaches a point where really it would, it would concern us at this time.
Roger, I'd like to follow up a little bit as well, because, you know, Mike and I talked about the C2 and the fact that we did rezonate just recently. However, as the example that Mike brings up, so Oletha Medical bought that property and then has completely sat on it. In this case, we feel extremely confident this applicant is going to follow through with potential development and move forward with a project that is beneficial. I mean, certainly can outweigh whether or not having a C2 commercial property developed there versus apartments. What is the overall benefit, but I think the fact that we had, in essence, you know, one in the hand versus two in the bush on this one was certainly an economic reason to have a positive.
Thank you. I mean, I certainly rely on, on staff, and I'm sure that everyone else does too, to, to alert us if they think there's a concern there. So I'm glad to hear you thought about it, and you believe the scale of this doesn't cause an issue. And as a result, that answers my question. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for staff? At this time, I'd like to open this to public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Mike Brungart. We did advertise the availability for the public to attend the online, the go-to meeting session. Looking at the list of attendees, I don't see anybody other than myself, that computer back there, and the planning commissioners on, on, on the line right now. So it doesn't appear like there's anybody present from the public that would make any comment.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd also follow up that we did do the typical mailings, certified mail, sign went out. We have not heard, I've not heard one comment or question from anybody who was contacted directly with the mailing or with any comments that maybe the sign on the property is generated.
Okay. Well, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, have any more questions for staff on this regarding this rezoning?
Manson, none.
Fisher, none.
Lane, none.
Couple, none.
Okay. At this time, a call for a motion?
Manson makes a motion to recommend approval to city council.
Fisher, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Templin?
Lane.
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Schultz, yes.
Fisher?
Fisher, yes.
Manson?
Manson, yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion is carried.
Okay, we have no old business, new business, item number seven. A site plan for K-10 apartments, second phase. Staff?
Alright, thank you, Chairman. We covered a lot of things in the rezoning, which will be an overlap with the site plan for this location. Of course, it's 3.9 acre tract along 91st Terrace. It will have 56 apartment units, and according, in accordance with our zoning regulations, site plan applications are subject to review and approval by the planning commission. There is some, I believe, one industrial revenue bond is being issued for this, Mike, so the city council will have the opportunity to review this site plan, which is a little bit unusual.
True, yeah.
So if you have any questions about how that works, you will have to direct those to Mike. I will take you through the application or the process for the site plan only. There were several sheets submitted that you were all privy to as far as your staff report. All application fees and owner certification have been submitted and paid. As I mentioned, there's fifty-six.
Excuse me, excuse me, Brad?
Yeah.
Can you talk maybe more directly into the mic? I'm having a real hard time hearing you.
Alright, Roger, is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. The site plan application proposes a 56-unit apartment complex consisting of seven buildings, each containing eight units. The rental office at K-10 Place Phase 1 will be used as a sales office for the additional seven buildings. Also, the clubhouse and pool facility that were constructed for the K-10 Phase 1 will have, the residents for Phase 2 will have access and an opportunity to use those facilities as well. Plan consists of 98 parking spaces with sidewalks throughout the site. As you can see, there's a connector from the Phase 1 site that goes through the, into the Phase 2 location, which will give residents of K-10 Phase 1 an option actually to walk to Harps without having to cut through a field or walk in the street on Commerce Drive. So we felt that was a positive feature. The applicant also added an additional sidewalk, as you can see off of Commerce Drive, that connects around the industrial, pardon me, the detention pond, and a wooded area that will remain, which we also felt was a positive feature of the site plan, keeping the natural trees that were in that northeast corner of the site still intact. As I talked a little bit about, the proposed eight-foot privacy fence. There's also a landscape plan that shows quite a bit of buffering on the properties that are adjacent to the multifamily R3 tract, which are not consistent. As you can see, the, the only area that doesn't really have any buffering is the K-10 Phase 1, and it's a like use, so there, our zoning, our code doesn't require buffering back there. As I'd mentioned, there's a wooded area which will remain, and then the detention pond will also provide some setback buffering from Commerce Drive. Talked about the sidewalk system that's also on the internal circulation. You can see both sides of the access where the apartments have sidewalks on them, and there's some additional sidewalks within that allow some internal circulation as well. Public utility connections include sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and city-owned water lines. Felt that it meets all of our requirements for the site plan development. I just kind of gave you the highlights. In essence, it, it mirrors very closely the K-10 apartments Phase 1, and the architectural standards have elevations of all building sides and material call-outs. As you can see, this is, it's easy to understand this one because we have a example that's constructed nearby that will be very similar to what is being proposed on this location. The 98 parking spaces are required by city code. It is the bare minimum, but that's what our standard is. So it does meet the parking requirement for this location. Signage, no signage has been submitted as part of the site plan. As I mentioned, anybody who needs access or would like to rent the site, or rent the unit will be directed to the sales office in K-10 Phase 1. Talked about the landscape, and it meets our site plan requirements. Stormwater management, we've also discussed the drainage aspects of it with the detention pond, which also was, will add some benefits for some additional open space and setback from Commerce Drive. Easements and lot lines, site plan proposes public water and sewer improvements on the interior of the site. These will be developed to DeSoto city standards, and the roads will also be developed with the same city standards in mind. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan as submitted with a couple of stipulations. One I mentioned in the zoning, that the applicant will have to submit a photometric plan, and then also prior to any occupancy permits, we'll have to have design plans approved by city engineer, and then all utility easements must be dedicated. So with that, I will certainly stand for any questions that you all may have.
Do any commissioners have any questions for staff on this?
This is Ian. I see that there are only four handicapped slots. Is that adequate for 98 parking spaces?
Yeah, it's, one for 25 is how many are needed, but it's also has to do with the applicant's requirement to have some percentage of some of the units to be handicapped apartment complexes, and that's why they're kind of clustered in those two areas.
So these two buildings up here on this corner area, they're going to have the handicapped accessible apartments?
Correct.
Okay, alright. If that's, that's legal, that's okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Schultz. On the northeast corner of the property, on page four, it says it's number 11, the sidewalk. It says the sidewalk is not ADA compliant. Is there any way to alter that so that it could be?
You know, Justin, maybe you want to speak to that, if you're available, because we did talk about that sidewalk. But we do provide ADA access throughout the site, so.
This is Justin Milburn with Milburn Civil Engineering. Due to that grade change, it's coming down a pretty steep hill. There's really not enough room to make up the grade to allow for ADA slopes. The slope requirement for a sidewalk to have ADA compliant is pretty flat, and we just, there's just not enough room to make that ADA compliant. It's coming down roughly 15 feet, so we just don't have enough room to make that ADA compliant.
Is there enough room that if somebody was going to be using an electric scooter, would that be able to climb that?
I'd have to look into that and see if that scooter could do that. I haven't explored that.
Do you happen to know, Justin, off the top of your head, what that grade is? I remember we talked about that, but I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's, the grade is roughly 8% is what that grade is.
I guess the point when we review this is ADA access is available basically from all directions on this site. And staff felt eliminating, if we said that that sidewalk doesn't meet ADA, we probably just eliminate it. But I think there was a benefit to have that connection to Commerce Drive.
I was just curious, because there's a couple of people in town that ride, have those little scooters, they ride them everywhere, and if it was limit them, if they had wanted to use that as a cutoff to go through something, I, it's something I'm thinking about.
Sure.
This is Ian again. Is the other sidewalk on the west side, number three, is that ADA compliant? It does not say it is not. I mean, I know this.
Are you talking about the one that connects to Phase?
Yes.
That's relatively flat through there, I think it probably would be.
Yeah, that one. Is that?
The one that connects to Phase 1?
Yes.
Yeah, looking at that, at the grade, it looks fairly flat. I can't say that. I can't say that it is, but just based on what I see from the grade, it looks fairly flat, so it likely is.
Well, maybe we better check that, Justin, because, yeah, I had the same thought. I just looked at it and said, wow, it's pretty flat. The elevations are relatively same, but we do have those connectors, I mean, those ADA stalls in Phase One and Phase Two right there.
Since the handicapped apartments are on that upper corner-
Yeah.
That would be the-
Let me verify that for everybody, and I'll check.
Okay. At least that would give-
This is Roger.
Go ahead, Roger.
So where do kids who stay in the existing Phase One? I guess two questions. One, is there free bus service? Are they too close to the school? And if there is bus service, where do they pick the kids up?
Yeah, I don't- This is Mike. I don't know the answers to that question. I see Travis may be on the line. Travis, I wonder if you know the answer to that? Travis, I see you unmuted your mic, but I, we're not hearing you here in the room. I don't know if your computer has a mic. You might need to call in.
Okay, I've turned my phone. Can you hear me now?
There you go, yeah, that's good. We can hear you now. Can't hear you now, Travis. Something else happened. I'm not sure what.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
So I don't know the concrete answer, but I believe that they're, we are located too close to the school. From what I remember, the students are walking or being driven by their parents to school, which I think is the case for most of the neighborhood around there.
Right.
So I don't know that, I have never seen a bus pull into our property, but, and there might be a special use bus that pulls in there, but I'm not 100% confident that we've even got that use there either.
Thanks, Travis. This is Roger again. So how do the kids in the existing phase walk to school? Do you know how they get there? Do they normally go to the north?
I would assume that they go to the north. Unfortunately, I just haven't, I'm not prepared to answer that question. I believe, from what I have seen and just casually observing, they drive or driven by their parents. We don't have too many kids there. I think I talked to the superintendent. It's between 10 and 15, so, you know, if they're in high school age, they're driving. And if they're grade school age, I'm pretty confident that the parents are probably going ahead and driving to school, but I'm not 100% sure. We will have that sidewalk along Commerce Drive complete, though, when we finish the remainder of our roadwork there on that north side. And then the contractor will finish the sidewalk all the way around the curb.
Guess I would add, Roger-
Fisher? I just found out, there is no bus service there. If they, one bus service, they're too close to the heights of the schools, they would have to pay for bus service.
Yeah. I figured that. I mean, I remember having to fight to get to the old country, so it doesn't surprise me.
So, I mean, there is no bus service to that K-10 Apartments.
So I guess maybe the question is, you know, assuming that it's five or 10 kids, whatever it may be, we're building this a little further to the south. It does seem somewhat likely those kids may very well go south rather than north, especially if they're going to Star Side. Do we have sidewalk access all the way along Commerce Drive up to this point? Or how are they going to be cutting across parking lots? Or what are we going to have them doing?
Yeah, so Roger, I'm zooming in on that area now. So we'll have it across Harps, but then there will be a gap across Pizza Hut, the Great Southern Bank, and the Minute Mart property before you pick up the sidewalk there again. Across those three properties, there is gaps. There's a gap there.
Yeah.
But the good news is-
I'm not sure how we deal with it.
Yeah. Once you get to the-
Thank you.
Minute Mart, of course, there's a new sidewalk along the west side of Lexington. I think we're good from there on.
Mike, I have a question for you. 91st Terrace, is that, those streets dedicated to the city?
Yeah, those are city-dedicated public streets. We haven't accepted them for public yet because they're not done yet, but they will be.
Okay. You have a city street that's, has an exit into private property, Harps?
Right.
Who is responsible for the, maintaining that section from middle of that intersection down out to Commerce Drive?
You mean on the Harps property? That's Harps. That's a, that's a private drive, a private parking lot. We treat this much the same as we would just a parking lot entrance off of Commerce Drive. You know, it turns from public maintenance to private maintenance. That's how we treat it.
And how does Harps feel about this?
I know that Travis got access easements and access agreement for that connection to be made for his development, although, you know, again, I think Harps treats it like I just explained. It's, it is a public street that ends in a private drive or a private parking lot, but they treat it much like any other entrance onto a public street. It looks a little different because the public street's aligned with the entrance rather than the entrance being on the side.
And they don't, Harps doesn't feel, or Travis doesn't feel that might interfere with their gas pumps and-
Yeah, Travis, you might be able to speak to, assuming your negotiations with them. We don't, I don't, from a public standpoint, I don't see, I don't see a conflict there.
And what's the people from using their parking lots as overflow parking?
To apartments?
Right.
Yeah, I guess nothing.
So what recourse would Harps have if that happens?
That would be probably a discussion between the two owners. I don't know what to say.
I'm sorry, Mike, I couldn't hear the question. Is there something that I can answer?
Oh, yeah. So Travis, the question relates to the 91st Terrace entrance onto Harps, and I know you had discussions with them early on about an access easement or the right to be able to do that, connect to their private drive there. The more, the recent, immediate question is, isn't it possible that the Harps parking lot could be used as overflow from apartment goers or dwellers or somebody visiting? And I don't think, from a public standpoint, that we really have the ability to police that. And I don't think we would have the ability, certainly not the ability to address it through a site plan in any way. I don't, I don't know if you had any discussions with Harps to that effect or if yours were just about the entrance.
Yeah, my discussion with Harps and our agreement is merely for cross-access to both properties. I don't believe, I believe they've got sufficient capacity, at least from what I can tell so far, that they wouldn't have the need, at least at this point, for overflow parking. Our parking ratios are the same as we had on Phase One, and being at 90-plus percent occupancy, we have not had a need for additional parking. I believe that it's sized correctly and shouldn't have that overflow on either side. But certainly, we do have access back and forth as needed. Now, will somebody park at the grocery store, go in and go visit somebody at the apartments? Maybe from time to time, but I don't think it's because of a lack of parking.
So you have, you have a written agreement with Harps on this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question?
You have a written agreement with Harps on this site?
Yes, we have a written agreement. It was required as a part of our plat and development there to have a cross-access, and that is a filed agreement written between our property and Harps' property.
Okay. I have nothing else. Any other commissioners have any questions?
Manson, none.
Fisher, none.
Lane, none.
McPherson, none.
Templeton, none.
Staff, do you have anything else you want to add to this?
No, Chairman.
This time we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for the K-10 Place Apartments Phase Two.
Fisher, second.
With the following conditions that were called out.
Do you have a motion? Tim, did you second that?
Yes.
Yeah, Fisher, second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Manson?
Manson, yes.
Templeton?
No.
Fisher?
Fisher, yes.
Schultz?
Schultz, yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, oh, Lane? Lane, yes. Thank you, Commissioners. The motion carried.
Okay. Item B, discuss text amendment to allow auto sales in C1 zoning district. Fred?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. You know, we'd brought this subject up to the Planning Commission at our last meeting as far as allowing a text amendment that would allow a special use permit to be presented to the Planning Commission for allowing automobile sales in the C1 district. As you know, this is part of a request by the property owner that would like to see, you know, Ford dealership continuing with some sort of automotive aspect in the downtown district at this point. Dean Weller's been operating it basically as a, I don't want to call it a hobby because it's pretty professional and high-end work that he does. However, it is not a retail-type business in any way, shape, or form. So we went through a discussion on what a special use permit might require of a potential applicant. And the first five items were some things that Mike and I had put together just to get you thinking about what those restrictions could be. And based on our discussion at our previous meeting, we came up with items six through 11, which were input from the Planning Commission at that time. So at this point, I guess I'd like to open it up to Commissioners to see if there's any additional items that we think might be necessary before we advertise for a public hearing. I'd also have our city attorney, Patrick Reavy, draft this up into a language that would fit within the city code prior to the public hearing. It would also be on your potential approval for next meeting's Planning Commission. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you may have. Some of the things were based on, like vehicle sales limited to 12 per year. It certainly aimed at antique vehicles, older restored vehicles. We didn't want to have a bustling showroom. However, there also needs to be a somewhat, give the applicant an opportunity to have somewhat of a thriving kind of business. I don't know. They have not indicated that they thought that they would ever sell more than 12 a year or even probably less than that. So we came up with 12 per year, basically one per month. I also added the vehicle sales from 1985 and prior. Apparently, the state of Kansas allows vehicles to be tagged if they're 35 years old and older. So 35 minus 2020 is 1985. Some of the others are just items that were brought up from discussions as far as making sure the vibration from the equipment or vehicles operations don't disrupt or create a nuisance to any of the adjacent businesses. And also, any kind of fumes or solvents be part of the special use permit. And then I added an item about wanting to have a licensed professional engineer ensure the safety of the building to hold vehicles, load-bearing capacity. And then also a somewhat, I mean, we don't have standards for this, but it'd be preferable to have some sort of interior architectural development plan showing that this isn't just going to be a warehouse or storage-type use within that building, which is what we're trying to avoid in our downtown district. We really want it to be a retail, commercial, automobile, antique business, not a hobby barn for who might potentially purchase and utilize the property. With that, I will stand for any questions that the Planning Commissioners may have.
This is Schultz. Number six, I think there might need to be a little bit of clarification in the text. It says fumes from paint, solvents, or exhaust must be in safely vented.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, there's possibly words, I think we can mostly just be safely vented in a manner that meets international building code.
And so in number eight, where it says devaluation by licensed engineer, might want to add structural engineer.
Okay, we can add that.
Could he be able to add-
Fred, wait here. I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you very well. So I know you addressed something on vehicle sales must be limited to 12. What was the determination on having that limited to 12?
Well, that was just discussions with the potential buyer and their goals. They just didn't feel like they were going to sell that many vehicles. They're also going to have some memorabilia, signs, and just older types of artifacts that they would be selling as well. So it wasn't surrounding entirely vehicle sales. They had actually, had mentioned maybe half a dozen vehicles a year, but I felt that it probably ought to be a little bit more than that. And I just came up with one per month.
I don't like limiting them to 12 per year. I think that's a little restrictive, in my opinion. But, you know, if they say they're not going to sell that many, as long as they meet the compliance, I'm just not sure why we would need to put a limit on how many they could sell. That just seems a little prohibitive to me. And my next question, and I know you spoke to this as well, but I couldn't hear what you were saying. And it said the vehicles for sale must be from 1985 and prior. Why is that date in there?
Well, that was, the state of Kansas allows vehicles to be tagged as antique if they're 35 years or older. And so 2020 minus 35 gets us to 1985. As we talked about, the potential owner has always indicated that they wanted to sell older type of restored vehicles, and that's sort of the standard we came up with.
Okay. That explains that. I just was wondering. That's all I have.
This is McPherson. So this guy is going to be restoring cars there and then selling them is the basic premise?
Correct. And there might be some, I guess, you know, buying and selling that are vehicles that don't need to be restored, but yeah.
Well, this is like a multi-part question, because the one that I really had a question about was establish a showroom with standard business hours. Now, if he's doing these cars full-time, then he will be there. He will be an eight-to-four kind of a setup. If this is his part-time or hobby job, then are we going to require him to hire somebody to be in that showroom eight hours a day, Monday through Friday at least?
Well, I guess that was part of the wanting to have standard hours, because we didn't want him to do all this and then all of a sudden say, no, this is going to be- want him to do all this, and then all of a sudden say, no, this is going to be a hobby, I'm just going to let only my close buddies in, and we're never going to have a showroom, so to speak. We thought it was important to have public, the public the ability to go in and look at these vehicles should they want to purchase one. As far as standard business hours, we didn't want to put anything that had to be eight-to-four or noon-to-four, but that will be part of the special use permit, and maybe that'll be something they'll require, be required to present to us, that, you know, maybe their thought is, you know, it's going to be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday thing. Is that standard enough from, say, noon to five? That would be a judgment call for the planning commission, but we just want to make sure that they're going to have standard hours that are open.
What about if we had it added or changed, say, you know, or by appointment only, or by appointment in addition to hours? I don't know. You know, like I said, if he's going to do this, if this is his main job, there's no problem, but if this is hobby, like Dean has done it for X number of years, then, you know, if we require standard hours, of course, like you just said, he could do it on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or something like that could be his standard hours. I don't know. We're trying not to stick him with something that he can't live with, but I also see your point. We don't want a storage area.
Correct.
At least Dean was there every day of the week, we knew that, so he was somebody there. I don't know. What does everybody else think about that?
If he wants to make it a viable business, there should be, if he's going to have it advertised on the door, that it's going to be there from nine to four or ten to whatever, you know?
Then he needs to be there.
Somebody needs to be there.
Yeah.
But if he puts that on the door, then it's going to be up to him. If people start showing up and he's not there, eventually they're going to quit coming around as well, but there's never...
If he advertises it, then he definitely needs to be there.
Yeah.
But you look at some of the other, this is Lane here, you look at some of the other businesses, and their hours are variable in town, so I hate to see somebody have a restriction so strict on his when none of the other stores in town have got those hours.
Yeah, this is Fisher. I agree with Linda, what she just said. You can't restrict anybody on their hours, working hours. And I think this guy's buying this as a hobby. I don't think it's going to be a full-time job, from what I understand. I don't know. I might be wrong.
See, that's kind of the opinion that I have taken, is it's more of a hobby. So the standard hours, I agree, is kind of, you know, I don't want to restrict him to having to be someplace he doesn't need to be or doesn't, can't afford to be.
And maybe as part of this process, we could request the buyer to come up and give us a presentation as to what his intentions were. That'd solve a lot of questions, I'd think.
Todd, you got any comments on this?
You know, I don't, I don't know. I think part of it is, we like, we all like the idea of keeping the history of doing the old cars and that, and I think our biggest fear is, we've got to think beyond just this guy doing this, but, you know, we don't want to restrict this guy to where we lose it, and, you know, it's a good opportunity to keep the history, is what I think, but I think we all know the guy's intention, like Tim said. It's just kind of a hobby place, he wants to keep the place, keep the history alive, kind of keep it going, but, I mean, this kind of limits him to that, but I don't think he's going to be setting up shop and running seven days a week or five days a week. I think he's going to be saying, I'll be there, you know, one o'clock on Friday till eight o'clock or ten o'clock, and do that Friday, Saturday, or something, but I think we all understand his intention, but I don't know. I just don't want to overthink it too much, but that's just me.
What do you think, Roger?
Well, I don't think it's necessarily been run as a full-time business for years, at least the twenty-eight years that I've been out there. So, I mean, if this guy wants to run it as a hobby, I think it's relatively consistent with what we've done, and I don't know that we necessarily ought to make him do something different unless you want to change the use of this property, and I'm not sure that I see a lot of people clamoring to use it. So I think there's a good argument that says that the requirement for standard business hours may not necessarily be warranted for this particular use, but, you know, I suppose there's nothing wrong with setting those kinds of standards and then special use permit. If there's an exception to it, you could make that. If you don't put it as a standard, you wouldn't really be able to talk about it, I suppose. So I don't have a real problem with any of these standards, and then the question is on the special use application, whether or not you feel like it's an appropriate use. That seems appropriate to me.
I guess one thing that also kind of spurred that thought was that we want activity downtown, so we want people to be able to show up and, you know, know that the car place is open on Saturday from one to five or Friday from noon to whatever. This doesn't mean that he has to be there, you know, five days a week or seven days a week, it could be just one day a week, but we just want some consistency and some standard where it is going to develop some more foot track, traffic, and more interest and activity in our downtown, and I just, I guess I'd be a little bit fearful if we, if it was just by appointment only, that might sort of defeat that purpose. That was sort of my thinking of having them require, and it's up to them in their special use permit to establish those business hours. We wouldn't require forty hours a week or twenty-four hours a week, it's whatever. They seem fit, but that would be part of what they would put in their special use permit application.
Well, I kind of agree with Tim. I think it's just a hobby for the guy, and this is just an ideal place for him.
I agree.
Plus, he's going to fix up the building as well.
Right, and he definitely needs that.
Yes, so...
You think he'd be willing to come in?
I think I would like to have that changed just a little bit with the hours, so maybe, I think if we could make some adjustment to that, maybe just having something that they have some established, maybe, established business hours or something, just to let them know that that's something that we want them to do, but not put a restriction on it. Something to that effect, how does that sound?
Sounds good to me. This is Schultz.
Tim, do you believe he would, this gentleman would come in and talk to us about what he wants to do?
Yeah, I think he would. I mean, I don't know if you know who he is, Dennis Hillhouse. He's kind of, he's retired, I know that for a fact, so, yeah, I think Dennis would come in there and talk to you guys.
How's the rest of the Commissioners feel about having him come in and talk to us?
McPherson, I agree. I think it's a good idea.
I'd just like to meet the guy, if nothing else. I may know him from here in town, but the name doesn't sound familiar.
Probably shouldn't have let the cat out of the bag, should I?
I'm just curious, so if you do have him come in next meeting, do we want to go ahead and have staff draw something up, or... And potentially act on it with a public hearing that time, or...
I would think so.
This is Roger. Only what we're doing is we're establishing standards for how to evaluate a special use permit for this use, right?
Correct.
Though I don't know that any particular applicant is the key to that. I think the question is, what are the relevant considerations? And if we want to soften the standard business hours language to something that gives more flexibility, I think that's absolutely appropriate, but we should evaluate the special use permit when he comes in for the special use permit, what we're trying to do is set the rules.
I bet if we change that to say, establish a showroom with posted hours.
I like that, yes.
That doesn't require, doesn't make us require him to do anything that he isn't ready to do or can't do.
Yes, and it gives him some flexibility. If something, he has put some hours in there and that doesn't work, and he wants to change, he can change it.
He can change it, exactly.
Anybody else? Makes sense to me.
Any other ideas?
We got nothing else. You know, I think the time is when the special use permit comes in, we get to evaluate all this again, so I got no further comment.
I appreciate the effort in putting together the guidelines, I think they're helpful, and I think I would like to see, you know, proposed language. I think it's good.
Anybody else? Brad, can you take care of that for the next meeting?
Yeah, we certainly will. We'll advertise for a public hearing, and I'll ask Patrick to draw up language, which includes your discussion items tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next planning meeting will be April the 28th. Hopefully, we can all attend. Anybody have any questions or concerns they want to bring up tonight?
The only thing I have is that I had a lot of trouble hearing. The only person I could hear real well was Mike. I'm not sure if everybody's mic wasn't closed or exactly what it was, but a lot of the conversation was garbled, so I'm thinking if we do have to end up ever doing this again, that perhaps we want to check those mics a little bit, because it was kind of difficult to hear.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback, and that is something we need to work on. So the audio that you're hearing through the go-to meeting is just this little microphone that's on the desk right next to me. That's why you can hear me and not everybody else. The mics in the room at the places aren't piped through the go-to meeting, so what I'm going to do is get a better, like, get a conference room mic and mount it, you know, somewhere that it picks up that, picks that up better.
Hopefully, we don't have to do this again, but I have a feeling we will be.
Yeah, but, yeah, anybody else? Yeah, that's good feedback, I appreciate that, Linda.
Anybody have anything else they want to bring up tonight? Motion to adjourn?
Be safe out there.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you who? I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting. This is Schultz.
I'll second it, McPherson.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Manson says aye.
Thank you for attending.
Hey, thanks for having the flexibility for us to do it like this, guys, I appreciate it.
You guys all be safe out there.
Yeah, sounds like I got some work to do on the mic.
It would have sounded like a baby.
The what?
One of the mics and one of the people out there, it sounded like a toilet flush in the background.
I thought I heard a dog bark at one point.
I heard a dog bark and a phone ring.
Phone ring, I might have heard a...
That was probably Linda.
Mike, is there any more like the same plan?
What is the latest? I did hear something a couple weeks ago. Yeah, April 16th, yeah. I haven't heard if they're rescheduling that, I'm sure it's still on for now. It's April 16th, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, I looked that up when you were sitting there, yeah. That was the last I, that was the last I heard. I think I put that on my calendar, for sure I did. Yeah, because we looked up where the courthouse was and stuff. Yep, nothing new. Nothing new. Did not pass, six sixty to six eighteen for the votes. Yeah, fifty-one, forty-nine, or something close to that. You know, now, nothing. I mean, that's easy. Now, nothing. It would have been tough if it passed. We would have, I mean, really had some decisions to make. You know, first of all, I don't, we're not, no one's selling bonds right now with the market the way it is, it just can't be done. Even if it could, I don't know if we should, you know? There'd be a decision to make whether we want to issue two, three-point-two million dollars of the bonds right now, the way things are looking, so... Here's the mayor right now. Hello, Rick? Oh, I'm still on, well, thank you for that. Good, the mayor called to tell when we're still broadcasting. Okay, we'll get that stopped. Everybody wave goodbye to the mayor.
Bye, Mayor.